Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you give us. Thank you for these folks who are here today, dear God, and thank you for their service to our community and to our public. We pray, God, that you would richly bless each and every one. Lord, we pray that you would lead and guide our footsteps as we are all in our own mission field, dear God, and that we would give you the praise and the glory for things that are accomplished. Father, we pray for your leadership and your wisdom and your guidance as we undertake this meeting. We might be of better service toward our fellow man. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) Swan County Board of Commissioners, work session July 11, 2023, 10:00 AM.
Face the colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Isle of Number Two, Island Sport and Justice. First up is Whittier Community Club. Mr. Bridget Mason.
Hello. I'm Bridget Nations, and I was handed the community building there in Whittier a couple of years ago. I was called and asked to take it over by the Martins. They were getting elderly and they just couldn't do it anymore. And I told them no for two times in a row, and by the third time, I decided somebody needed to try to do something with it. So I kind of just took it over. There's really not much to it. It's a community building that, from my understanding, just talking to some people in Whittier, that the property and the land was donated by somebody and was given to the community, and that the community came together and built the building. That's as far as I know about the community building. It has two bills to it. It has a power bill and it has insurance that's paid once a year on the property. I really didn't know what to do with this. When it was handed to me, I kind of asked my mom and my dad to kind of help me with it. My dad passed away a year and a half ago, so he's no longer on the board. So it's just kind of me and my mom. I have called everybody I know and asked them to try to help me. Nobody's interested in being a part of it. It's like I was telling Kenneth this morning, I used to could tell you about 90% of the people that lived in Whittier. I could tell you their names, where, you know, their kids' names. I could tell you about 10% of the people now. I just don't know that generation that used to have a community club that met once a month, they have all passed on. And we just don't have that type of relationship in our community anymore. So taking this building over, I kind of just walked in empty-handed. I was given a shoebox full of old bills and old receipts. I gave you a copy of something from the bank that shows it's a nonprofit with a tax identification number. That's all I have for that. I was told by Jean Childers that used to be on the board that, you know, they used to get together and have a community club. People would bring a covered dish, they would eat once a month, take up a collection, and if there was any problems with the building, that everybody jumped in as a community and they fixed it. Well, I don't have that anymore. I was just given this building. I started renting it out. People rent it for birthday parties, baby showers, retirement parties. And I gave you all some material about a couple of people that use it a lot. I've got the Grace Bible Church at first, before they actually had a building, they were using it for church services on Sunday mornings, Wednesday nights, and they were giving a donation to the community building. When I saw that this was not going to pay for repairs, back in June of 2020, I tried to do a fundraiser. I advertised, I paid for a thing in the newspaper, and I advertised on Facebook, and I went around to businesses and I collected hot dogs, potato chips, drinks from the Coca-Cola company, desserts, and I tried to have a fundraiser. I had three vendors show up, one of them including myself for Tupperware, and I had three volunteers show up to help me with the hot dog sale. I think when everything was said and done, we made about $564 is what we gained from that. And then just over time, the $25 I was charging to rent it, the power bill's $50 to $60 a month, so I have to rent it at least two times a month just to pay for the power bill. And then you have your insurance that comes up all of a sudden, once a year, it's $350. It's like I was telling Kenneth, I'm at a loss. I don't know what to do with this. I'm trying my best to do what I can with it. I'm trying to rent it out as much as possible. When the church started using it on Sunday mornings for their youth group, has just gotten so big they didn't have room, I told them, I mean, it's a church, I said, you know, you guys should be able to use our community building for your church service, and they still send me a $50 check every month. They're in there an hour, they don't use, they don't use heat, they don't use air, they go in there for one hour, their youth group gets together, and they still send me a check for $50 every month to help pay on the power bill. Then anybody in the community passes away. Back in January of this year, Mr. David Martin passed away. His family called and said, can we use the community building for a service after the burial? And I said, sure, don't pay anything. He's a, he's a community member, he's lived here all of his life. Use the community building. I had a lady that used it back in March for a benefit for her daughter's medical needs. I gave it to her for no charge because that was kind of like our contribute to her cause for trying to raise some money. And then Ms. Inez Martin died six months after her husband, and again, I let the family use it again. Other than that, I ran it out to people for birthdays, things of that nature. At this moment, that latest from the bank, there is $435 in the account. The AC is going out. I have called people, I had a guy come, he charged me $85, he cleaned out the filter. The AC started working again, so I was okay with that, I guess. The next couple of times it, I called Damian Phillips that works for, what's his name, Daryl Thompson, and he came by and volunteered his time, fixed what needed to be fixed and didn't charge me a dime, but he also told me the last time he came out in May, very beginning of June, he said, you know, I'm just, I'm just putting a Band-Aid on the AC unit. The unit's old, it's probably never been changed. I'm just kind of at a loss here. I don't know what to do. I don't know, I talked with Kevin about getting the community involved. I really don't know how to go about that. I don't know if I can get enough community members there in Whittier to come and either donate their time, donate their money. I have been told by two people that the roof is going to need repaired soon, there's going to be a new roof. I don't know where to get that money from, I don't know what to do. So I spoke with some members of the Barker's Creek Community Building a while back, and I said, hey, what are you guys doing? How do you, how do you do this in your community? And they told me to call Mike Clampett. So I sent Mike Clampett an email, I left him a voicemail. He recently emailed me back and said, I can ask for some money from the state, but it's kind of too late at this point. You can, you'll have to wait till the next session, and if you'll get me some information. He said, in the meantime, go to your commissioners. So I sent the information to the commissioners, and that's where I'm at. I'm just, I'm kind of at a loss here, I don't know what to do. Either leave the building and just let it sit there and decay and rot, and nobody uses it, the community doesn't benefit from it, or county can take it over and do what they want to do with it, or, I mean, I don't know what to do with the community building. So I'm at a loss. So, you know, I'm, it needs a new AC unit to be used in the summertime and heat for the winter, because that's when it gets rented the most is in the wintertime, when people can't be outdoors to have birthday parties, baby showers, and that, that type of thing. So...
Who actually owns this building? Is it?
I have no idea. As far as I was told, Jean Childers told me she thought it was just the community. She said the only thing that she could remember, you know, years ago, was that somebody donated the property and the community built the building and called it the Whittier Community Building. I mean, I don't, I don't have any history. There is boxes of material inside the community building in a closet. I started going through it and I ran into just mostly pictures. It was pictures, it was some meeting stuff, you know, from old community club meetings. I never really found any other papers that showed a deed or a title or anything of that nature. So I've lived in Whittier my entire life, and when, you know, when they asked me to take it over, I just felt like, okay, somebody's got to take it over. So, I mean, I just volunteered. You know, I don't have any experience in this type of thing, so I don't know what to do. So that's why I'm asking for help. I'm open for suggestions.
But it sounds like the problem is bigger than just HVAC unit that there's...
And I think it eventually will be.
And that's, yeah.
I was told by a couple of people, the insurance company called me two years ago and said they had came out and walked around the building and there was vines growing up the back of the building onto the roof that needed to be taken care of before the insurance would renew, so I got somebody to come down there, and as they climb up, you know, he said, you know, you're going to probably need a new roof soon. Okay? I don't know where to go about, you know, to do this stuff. So I'm at a loss, so, I mean, I'm asking for suggestions, help. If the county would like to take the community building over, I'd give it to anybody that would want to, because I really don't have time for it. I work full-time, I have two part-time jobs, I'm a mother. I just do it to kind of keep it going. I don't know what to do with it. Like I was telling Kevin, and I've said already, it used to be a community thing. I used to could tell you, everybody, and, and people were good about that. I went to many community meetings with my grandmother. She's been dead 12, 15 years. I mean, all these people that used to be involved in this, they've all passed away, and our newest generation don't get together like that anymore. I mean, I could put an advertisement saying, hey, we're going to have a community meeting here Tuesday night at 6 o'clock, and you might have two people show up. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what to do with it.
Anybody got any suggestions or any facts?
I don't have any suggestions. I'm glad the paper's here that they can write some of this down, because this is part of the problems that I've been trying to get the communities to wake up and take care of what we used to and stuff, and I don't know how to do it. The government, if we take over every single thing, I mean, it's just going to be high, high taxes, and that's just how it is. And I hate, I would rather try to build the community back, but, I mean, that's, it may not happen the way I'd like for it to.
Right.
I don't know how to help you.
You suggested churches, and I think that's a great idea, but I only have one church that actually uses the building, because everybody else has their own fellowship hall. So they, if they need to use it, you know, for dinner, they use their own church. So I just have this one Grace Bible Church that just kindly got started in the past year that, you know, used it. As soon as I got in there and went in, it has fluorescent lights in it, four or five of the bulbs were burned out. I went to Lowe's, I purchased bulbs, put them in, they still didn't work. I got an electrician out there, he said it's the valances. So I ended up, the church offered their time to replace them if I could buy the products. So I guess what I did, Lee English went and bought them, I paid him back with a check from the community building, and then they fixed all of our lights. We have lights now. We had a water leak. I had to call Lee English again. He came out and he charged me what it cost to have your pipes fixed and your water leak fixed, so that the kitchen didn't flood. We needed a new refrigerator. I had somebody in the community give me a refrigerator. It lasted two months, it went out. So I got somebody else to donate another used refrigerator, thank goodness it's still working right now. I mean, I'm at a loss here. I don't, I don't know what to do with the community building. I can let it go and just let it sit there. I can close it down, close the account, and just let it sit there, but I hate to do that. I hate to, people, you know, I gave you guys a calendar from January on. You know, January, it rented quite a bit. I mean, I haven't had it much in the past couple of weeks, but anybody in the community that wants to rent it is welcome to rent it. Anybody that needs to use it, and if it's a need, I mean, I'm not going to charge them to use it. Right now, I'm charging $30. It takes the $30 to go buy a pack of toilet paper, paper towels, and garbage bags just to keep in the building for people when they use it. So, you know, I mean, I have bought in two mops out of my own pocket because the mops keep tearing up or breaking. Yeah, I mean, you know, so, I mean, I'm at a loss here. I don't know what to do.
At some point, the community's going to have to do more.
And I agree, but I just don't know how to go about that neither.
Well, you got a different community now that you said it's different.
Yeah, than you used to have.
So, I mean, you might not see...
I mean, I can go door to door and ask.
Well, I was thinking like the HOAs, a lot of those developments up there, might be able to help. They might not even know it's there, some of them.
Yeah.
Some of the people might not know it's there.
Churches would be good outreach. They should help reach more people in the community also. Like this one church, they probably know a lot more people too. I don't know who all goes there or anything. But the outreach and stuff, once we start taking over some, like you said a while ago, the roof's about to go. You don't have the money for that.
Right.
Then the other communities, well, we want this, and we want that, well, then they're going to come to us.
Right.
And they're going to want it. But it is a community building. We need to at least know, and I don't even know who owns it yet, and apparently you don't even know.
I don't know who owns it neither.
We got to find that out, because it's probably the community club.
If there's a 501(c)(3), there's a board, there's a board somewhere with somebody's names on it.
Well, when it was handed to me, the people that was on the board, I have the paper here that's got Kristen Martin was the president and treasurer, Ed Martin, her husband, was the vice president, Ann Steele, I don't even know that name, was the secretary, Jean Childers was a member, and I know her, she's elderly, she has no interest in it whatsoever, and Alden Childers was a member also. I was told at one point that I was given other names that took it over. I was even told by one person that one guy that took it over at one time kind of used it to his advantage and kind of, you know, let balls drop on getting donations from certain places. Jean told me that there's a committee that I could go to once a year in Asheville, sit through a day's lecture, and they might give me $350 to pay the, for the insurance once a year. I don't have time to do that. I don't have time to take off work and go to Asheville and sit all day to hopefully maybe get a donation of $350. What good is that going to do except pay the insurance on the building one time? So, I mean, I'm at a loss. I don't know what to do. I would love to keep the community building open, being available to our community members, but at this point, I mean, if you don't have AC and you don't have heat, it's not going to rent very well.
I would think like doing something like save our community building and kind of post, getting that, getting that word out in the community. You're going to have some people that, you know, local people that'll come to, but getting that word out to people that don't know it's there, and they don't know that it's...
Well, I have made a, I did make a Facebook page, and I have shared it with everybody, and there's tons of people that likes it, and I've rented it a few times because of that, so, I mean, it's worth a try. I mean, at this point, I'm willing.
I mean, you could get the, get that out like some of these HOAs. A lot, a lot of these people that are moving in here are looking for something like that, they just don't know it's here.
Right.
I mean, I, I know a lot, a lot of people that's moved in here, and they, they like community stuff.
Right.
And so they may just not know it's there.
Yeah.
And I would really push that effort of getting that in. Maybe if you had to mail some letters out to, to some HOAs, because how can you get those addresses, Kenneth?
We can get you the address, if you just have to remember the question, we can get you the address of any board in the Whittier area.
Okay.
You might have access to your water.
Yeah, because I'm on the Whittier water.
You brought us the...
And that's what I told him, I could tell you names of people, but if I put them on the street, I wouldn't be able to tell you who they are.
That's exactly right.
We might as well.
I have a question for you. Is anybody telling off the non-Whittier end over here for the non-proper stuff?
I have no idea what that is, but Jean Childers was telling me about this guy, Mike, that had it a few years ago, that he dropped the ball on that. I don't even know what it is. I said, can I give...
If it lasts more than three years, you're no longer a non-proper.
Yeah.
Okay. So see, I have no idea about that, and, and I'm sure that was at least five, 10 years ago.
Yeah, it's, so from our IRS standpoint, you're not a non-proper anymore, and even though you're, you're just a club, which you can, you can be a club, you know.
Right.
And you just can't...
And I'm, I'm willing to look into that, I just...
I was wanting to draw a list, because you have to have a license from the state, a solicitation license, and you have to be a non-proper, so you have to get all that back until you get the letter drawn.
Right.
Did you give us something with the, with the EIN number on it? Is there something, is there something with the EIN number on it here?
Well, if you can get an EIN number, you don't have to be a non-proper.
I got it from the bank.
I just, I just wonder if you had one with that.
Yeah, the bank, the statement from the bank on the account agreement says it's a nonprofit checking, and down below it, it has a, a, a number that I was told by Jean Childers is definitely, you know, a nonprofit tax identification number.
So anyway, we can help them get that straightened out, or?
I mean, I can look at it for you, just to see, and I'll send it to our account.
Well, this is my problem. If, if something doesn't get done soon, I'm just going to have to just let it go. I'm just going to have to let it go, because if people's not going to rent it in the month of July, August, and September, if there's no AC. In the wintertime, it's not going to rent if there's no heat in the building. It's a brick building, it's, it's really cool, you know, very cold. You know, I, I, like I said, I don't know what to do.
Is it working right now?
The AC does work. The people that used it last Tuesday night, which is also a, it is a group that is a religious group, they use it every, every other Tuesday night for a mercy and grace reunion group. They're there for about an hour. She said that it didn't feel like it was working real well to them. So I'm not sure.
Okay.
You know?
Are there any way we could match funds with what they raised?
I do know that Shannon Lackey, I'm pretty sure he called most of you guys and talked to you all a while back, because he's the one that called me and encouraged me to come and do this. He said he talked to Daryl Thompson and that he agreed that if I could come up with the money for the unit, that he would be glad to install it for no charge. So that takes care of that part, but the unit itself, I don't even know how much it is. I just took a wild guess on $8,000. I, I don't even know how much they are. It's been 10 years since I bought one for my home, and my home one was about $6,000. So other than that, I, I don't know anything about them. But I know that Shannon did tell me he did talk to Daryl Thompson, and he said he would be glad to provide the services for free to help out the community if the unit could be purchased, so.
We did, we did send a crew up there to work at, just to kind of get an assessment, and I think we'd get a unit for around $4,000, if it's like a split system with multiple heads, and that's what they kind of recommended.
Okay.
So it'll be less much if, if we put it in, or like a $3,400.
I had a thought that, I think we've got three communities, right? Three community buildings? Got Whittier, Alarica, Kirkland's Creek. Is that, is that all we got? Does anybody know of any other?
That's only three I know of.
Because we mentioned about doing for one and not doing for the others, and I thought if we did do something, we could maybe do a little bit for every one of them, if that, if that was feasible. And then, so that would be, you know, if you done like a couple thousand dollars, David, that would be half of the, half of that, and, you know, but I don't know what guys think.
You know, if I could get a committee together and a club and members and get this stuff, you know, if we could get that AC fixed and the heat and it's working and rent it out more, you know, hopefully I could come up with the money for the, you know, to get the roof repaired. I've actually talked to a couple of people that does roofing and said, hey, would it be possible, like when you went to do a job, if there was extra materials, kind of donate those materials? I don't know how that works. I don't know if, you know, if these people donate a little bit and these people, I don't know if you could do the whole roof with donated materials. I don't know. You know, and then maybe get volunteers in the community to put it on. I mean, my husband at our own, at our house by himself, so, I mean, it can't be that hard, but...
Anybody got anything else?
We definitely, the idea of getting a committee started would be...
And I would love to do that. I mean, you know, if...
If you can.
If I could have some help and get it started and get people interested and involved, you know? And the other thing is, like I told you, is it's time on my part. I mean, I work for the school system, I've been there 15 years. During the summer, I work a summer job. I do the Whittier Community Water. I mean, I'm on it. I do all the work for it. That takes, that's a lot, very time consuming, every month. I haven't even done the water bills for the month of last month. I mean, I usually have them in the mail by the 10th, and I haven't even finished them yet, just because time's an important thing. And then I work two part-time jobs. You know, I mean, that's where times are with having a, raising a family and having a home, so.
And that water thing is a whole nother...
It's a whole nother system, yeah.
A whole nother thing.
And I mean, I'm to the part on it that I don't even want to run for it next year when it's time to run for it.
Yes, something's going to have to be done about that also.
I mean, I have interest in the tribe taking over our water system, and I have told them that, that sounds great to me, I don't know how to go about that. The water system runs through, through a state thing, and they're, I don't know how that works, but Jeremy Hite told me he would look into it and see, you know, where that would go, so that I can get some help with that. But I mean, I'm ready just to give it up, you know what I'm saying? I'm to a point, I can't get nobody to help me. There's plenty of money in it, you know, and if I knew a way that I could use the water department money to donate money to the community building, I don't know if that's possible, but I mean, I've even thought about that. But I don't know how that works. You know, I have to take the...
You have to get your office in there, and this is the water company as well, somewhere in the community building. There you go.
Well, I mean, we donate the water to the community building, you know, because we use it for our quarterly meetings that nobody comes to except the board members. It takes us 10 minutes, most of the time we don't even unlock the door and go in, we just have it right there in the parking lot. So, I mean, that, that's just where I'm at on this stuff. I mean, I'm just at a loss. I'm open for suggestions, I'm open for help, and...
It sounds like you need to somehow establish a board, a committee, you know, four or five, five people maybe, or something like that, and then...
And believe you me, I've called people. I mean, I've called the people I know that's involved. Kathy Dunlap, she is walking with a walker right now and can't really do anything. Mary Bradley, just retired because of her health.
Yeah.
I mean, Lori Wright, she just passed away. She was willing to help me, she was sick, she passed away. I mean, I, you know, these are just a few of the people that I know personally that's lived in Whittier all of their life, you know? There's very few of those people. Out of the water system, out of the 100 accounts that we have, half of those are rental properties.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you've got people that, you know, they don't care nothing about the community, they're just living there right now, and they usually leave, leaving a big water bill. I mean, I told him, I've got a lady right now that's on a fixed income, draws social security, raising two grandbabies. Our water bill is $1,750 a month, she owes over $300. I can't turn her water off, she's raising grandbabies. She is elderly. I'm not turning her water off. I, I can't do it. I just can't do it. So, I mean, I'm a community member and I'll do anything for my community. I love Whittier, I'll do anything to support it. Like I said, I took over the community building thinking that I could do something with it, and I'm to a point that I don't know what to do with it. If somebody else wanted to take it, I'd hand everything I had to them.
Don't give up.
Well, I'm trying not to, that's why I'm here today, you know? I mean, I'm trying everything that I can, but I'm at a loss.
Anybody else got anything?
I was wondering if there's any kind of grant monies of any kind, or applications of donations?
Well, I think that's what my understanding is, is that Mike Clampett was able to do. Barker's Creek Community Building told me that they reached out to Mike Clampett and that he was going before something in the state to ask for money. I do understand that he was able to get Alarica Community Building $50,000. I mean, $50,000 would give you a new roof, new AC unit, you could buy new tables that's, that's, you know, nee-, definitely needed, and put new appliances in the building. You know, a new fresh coat of paint. I mean, that, I, when I, by the time he got back with me, it was already too late. The deadline was February. He told me I could get all of my affairs in order and be ready for next year, you know?
Does Dogwood have anything like community envo-, development stuff?
And apparently Barker Street reached out to him too, you know?
We can check with them, but they will want your, make sure your, with our rest bill.
Right. And see, I had no idea about that. All Gene Childers told me was, is that when this guy, Mike, was over the community building, that he dropped the ball on everything. He kind of misused funds, and the next day he was gone, and he moved out of Whittier. You know, that's the information I received from her, so.
I'll try to help you out with that.
Okay. Okay. I'll be glad to. I'll do whatever I need to do. You know?
We'll see if he owns the building, and if we're planning, uh, we'll reach out to Dogwood.
Okay.
See if anything meets their criteria.
Okay.
That may, that may have a, a community economic development. I know in years past, just for, for, you know, before they moved the, uh, before they moved the elections to Birdtown, all the elections had done it.
Right.
For years and years, and we, I don't think they ever paid anything. So, I mean, the, we, we did get, the county did get benefit for many, many years.
For many years as, yeah.
You know, for the board of elections. So, uh, we did pay, um, currently, now at Alarca, with it being a polling location, we do give them a, I think it's a dollar from the board of elections, that was, you know, for them. So, I mean, if you want to look at it from that standpoint, this is pretty old information. We have, the county has used that building.
Yes.
And never meant to charge anything. So, um, because it was a community placement for voting, so.
And one day it may have to go back there, you know? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And like I said, I'm willing to do anything, and I'm, like David, I don't want to give up on it, but I'm, I can only do so much as one person. I mean, that's what I told Kenneth. I've even paid a couple of people out of the community building to, um, clean off the Whittier Cemetery, because there's no board over it. It's just sitting there. There's dead trees that's fell on it. When Miss Amanda, I can't think of her last name right now, passed away in Whittier, um, somebody gave me the materials that she had and writing family members and asking for donations for the graveyard. I sat down and done what I could with it, and fifty percent of them I got back in the mail as non-, non-deliverable. So, I mean, so our community, our cemetery is sitting there, and I told him, I sent the little guy, Timmy Rogers, in Whittier up there, told him I'd give him a little money if he'd go weed eat a little bit. He ran into another family member that was weed eating, only his family plots, and he volunteered and helped him, and they done the whole community building. Uh, this guy didn't ask for any money. I gave, uh, Timmy Rogers twenty-five dollars of the community building for his all day of weed eating, because I, so I mean, you know, I try to do what I can with it, but it's, it's just a shame that all of those folks that cared about these things have all passed away, and there's not many people that.
I got one question, uh, Mr. King. The, you said the board of elections gave Alarca a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars a year?
It's, it's, I think it's whenever they use it for an election.
Okay, so it's, it's every other year, I guess, that there's elections held? I'm just trying to figure out a way to, since we had used the building years, for years and years, for, as an election place, uh, polling place there in Whittier, if, uh, if there was a way that we could go ahead and match the money to buy the unit that they need, and then either see about getting it installed or whatever. You're talking about four thousand dollars. And I know we can't vote on that today. It's not a voting issue, but, you know, it's something to think about. Look at all the years that we have used the building, and they hadn't received anything out of it. And, you know, any other place that, uh, I'm sure that we, um, are paying other bi-, other places to use their buildings, you know, for elections. So, it's not like we, uh, we can just have it for free because it belongs to the community. It's, we need to do our fair share too. And that's, that's what I feel about it. It's, it's important to.
What's our, hey, what we.
But we have, we have, you have to get the community back involved.
Yes. And I agree. I mean, that's why I was telling Kenneth, if I knew a way to do it, I mean, be glad to go door to door and say, hey, we're gonna have a, you know, a community gathering over here, you know? Everybody's welcome to come. Let's discuss some issues and.
If anyone right behind you can help you a whole bunch.
Right.
This one?
Yeah. Mr. Paperman, if you would, be so kind to write a good story about it. Yeah.
You will.
You're doing your best, right?
If I could just add to that too. I do the reservations for all the buildings around town, you know, the county ones or whatever, and Senior Center, when they took away the kitchen part, we don't have a building at all that has a kitchen, but they do in Alarca does, so we refer them out a lot. So, just to give you a little heads up that when somebody calls and wants a building with a kitchen.
Whittier has a kitchen?
Yes, yes. It has a kitchen. There is two old stoves, but they work, and the refrigerator works right now, and the hot water heater, it was donated, uh, by Mr. John Bose. It was a used one, hot water heater, hadn't worked in years. Um, he donated me a, um, used hot water heater, and I had it hooked up, and it works great, so. Um, there is dishes. Um, there's lots of people that leave things that's available to use. There's silverware and plasticware and, uh, two bathrooms, and that's what I said. I furnish the toilet paper, paper towels, and the, um, trash bags.
Mr. Chair.
So, we need to get a price on the unit. See about establishing a committee. Help with the paperwork.
To get it listed as a nonprofit.
Check on, check on any other grants or anything.
Okay.
And.
I'll do some research.
Okay. As far as I know, like I said, the people that used it last Tuesday night said it didn't seem to be cooling real good, you know? But that's also a problem when they go up to use it and say they're, it's gonna start at six o'clock. Somebody might get there at five thirty and turn it on. If it's eighty-six degrees outside, it's gonna take a little while to cool down the building for their hour meeting. So, I mean, that could, you know? Um, I always suggest to people that's gonna use it, you know, for a few hours, go an hour early and get that AC turned on, or the heat turned on, and get it warmed up or cooled down in there, you know, before you go. So, I've even volunteered to do it a couple of times. I live a half a mile from it, and I'll say, I'll run down at, you know, eight o'clock, turn it on for you, so it's ready at ten when you get there.
Mr. Chair, I have something else too, because we need to go ahead and get to looking at the water stuff.
It's not a problem right now, but it's gonna be. I mean, like I said, um.
If it's gonna be.
When Mitchell was on the board, and he was on the water board for years, he could tell you about anything about it inside out. When I lost him, I lost all of my knowledge about it. I mean, all I had was what I knew then. Cherokee has been so great. We are kind of out of contract with them, but they have been so great to keep providing that contract, you know, um, even though we're out of contract. They provide lots of services for us. If I have an emergency, the only person I can get in the whole community is Lee English. He will come out on the spot. Um, I was in Florida last week, and somebody called and said, hey, I have no water. I called the neighbor below, the neighbor above. They had water. I told him to go out and search his property. He walked up, and he said, somebody has ran over the water meter. It's busted. There's water everywhere. Lee English was there in fifteen minutes and took care of the problem. You know, there's money in that account. I built it up from, it started when I first took it over as the financial officer twelve years ago. I think there was three or four thousand dollars in it. I, it's about forty thousand dollars in it right now. Um, I don't pay for silly stuff that I have seen in the past that get used to, to, to pay funds for and stuff, and I just, I maintain it the best I can. You know, it has the whole thing about the nonprofit, because I have to take everything to an auditor in Murphy every year. Our, our year for it just ended. But I, after Mitchell died, it took me six months to find somebody in Whittier willing to be part of the board. I had to have another board member. I had to have somebody to sign checks. So, I mean, Cherokee's been really good, and their interest in it and taking it over, uh, has become, you know, a, a great thing. I mean, I just don't know how that works. I mean, that's what Jeremy Hite said, that he would be willing to look into, seeing, you know, this being a state property and them being a federal property, if they could take over that water system and then sell the water back to Whittier. Because they want to run all new lines, new well, new pump, the whole nine yards. So.
It's definitely something we need to be.
Yeah.
Helping, helping them out with if we.
I guess it would be us and Jackson County.
Yes, because half of it's in Swain County, half of it's in Jackson County.
Or the commissioners for both counties would have, to have a joint resolution asking the state, creating no longer being district, but to have, have it, all those assets transferred to like charity, if I could, or, or Plaza, which already does have a silver part.
Yeah. I think we'll look into this stuff and get back with you.
That's great.
Contact with you.
Okay.
And we'll figure out at least some kind of.
All right. I appreciate you guys, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Item number B, YouTube online.
Yeah, uh, I think you or somebody asked me about the YouTube stuff, and, you know, we did that back when we had, when children were going on, because people could not access the bills, could not access the room, and also, um, didn't feel comfortable coming into the building and asking for, you know, the minutes, or have an email, or anything like that. So, we initiated that. Um, did want to let you know, it, it does cost. I mean, we do have a, a, a cost associated with that, uh, with, with personnel. You've got, you know, about four hour a week roughly, uh, that we have to pay IT people to keep the, keep the socket on, and also being here, uh, during meetings to, to run it. So, before, we had basically a recorder, and it was an audio recorder, and we recorded all the meetings, and we would keep those for about a month or two, and then the only day that they would go away, it, it laps off. And because you'd have the minutes. Once the minutes approved, there's been reporting left. So, up until that point, you know, press or anybody from the public can request anything, they're only a public record, so they can just request it in the writing, and we provide it for them. So, just didn't know, you know, going forward, I know this came up at PDA meeting, the PDA folks decided that they were not gonna do anymore YouTube because of their staffing, and the board just didn't want to have the time. So, wanted to bring that up, let you know, it, you know, it is, it is a, uh, you know, four hour a week, but, so that, on average, that we're spending timelines, uh, just for YouTube, and the utilization on YouTube is about twelve people. So, uh, it's not really, it's reaching a less than a tenth of a percent of the population. Just a thought. Y'all can make a decision and let us know.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Or, on that, are we still recording, video recording?
No, it's just the audio.
I mean, just audio.
We're doing video now with YouTube, but there'd be no sense in it. And we don't have the, we don't have really the, the setup to like zoom in on people, so really, it's just, I mean, you could put the same sterile image up there, and nobody would even know. You know, the media is not why they, they talk us out here. I mean, it's not why the people would have to stop here.
Is there another way that they could view? I, I've talked to several people who talk like they view the videos. But if we done the recording and stuff, would people be able to?
We, we can email them to record it.
It ain't nothing we could put on our website, and that costs a whole lot to do that?
Yeah, we cost more to do that than YouTube channel. Because, yeah, we have a company that takes care of the website, so it's, you'd have to get them to do it every night.
How much is YouTube?
The, the cost of YouTube is not much, but the personnel running, like Michael over there, he's, you know, he's running around now, for instance. And so, his time and keeping these things moving, keeping the thing going, it just takes away from his time. So, if you want to look at it from that perspective. And it was done basically out of, out of COVID and, and state, you know, guidelines, was that you had the accessibility of the public, and so during that time, they, they didn't have the ability to, to come into a meeting, and so that's why YouTube is there. Just figured for all, y'all, I did have a few questions about it, so if you want to bring it back up at time, if not at time too, I just wanted to make sure everyone, I had the same conversation with the one I did have with everybody.
So, the cost isn't much, his time?
It's his time, but I mean, it's, it is time.
Does he lose out on other things?
Oh, yeah. He could be doing a lot different, but.
He works for us, so.
He, he does. He does.
I like Steve, whoever I have.
I've had several comments. There's lots of people. There's more out there than just maybe a twelve-person audience, I think. There's, uh, what's good about it for me is I can go, I can go to it any time and recall something that I've said, something that somebody else has said. It's on YouTube for a good while. I don't know how long. Don't know, don't know how long they keep it there, but I don't know. For, for myself, I, I feel like it's worthwhile. It's another thing for outreach to the community. It's another avenue. It's another newspaper. It's another radio spot, and people can tell what we're doing on their benefit. I don't know. I, the other thing I was gonna say is I heard on the news coming in here that there's a major dust storm blew out of the Sahara Desert, and it's already reached the coast of Florida. So, we may be wearing our masks again, or we may be staying inside. I don't know. I've not seen the clouds of, of dust. But anyway, you know, after COVID, you know, maybe one or two. What's next? What's, what's gonna happen next? And none of us know that. But since it's established, if it's not that expensive, I'd be for continuing it myself. And that's just my thought.
I agree with Mr. Carson. I believe it's according on what issue we're discussing, how many people watch it.
Right. I mean, well, a lot of times it is that. Just that.
I think we're general consensus. We'll just leave it at that.
Sounds good. No problems.
Uh, next is the fire positions.
Yeah, so back in the budget process, we, uh, had put two items, and basically I was instructed to bring them back up in July. And so, that's what I'm doing. The first one is the fire position, uh, which we've talked about, uh, pretty much utilizing possibly some savings or some North Shore Road funding, or some funding for, you know, two positions, four positions. I'm not sure, not where we left that. I think there was a lot of, there were , I guess, questions. So, that's why I'm bringing back up, um, going forward. How do you want, do you want to have this on some, a formal agenda item, uh, to vote on? And right now, it would be the funding, you know, it's of course coming from savings, which, uh, we do have, uh, funding available, either through, um, you know, North Shore Account, or through our fund balance, uh, in order to cover. But with that said, in two years, you may or may not be able to afford it based on revenue, because you're dipping in savings just like anybody else. You've got that saving down over here. So, just, I just wanna let, you know, how, how do you, we want to see at that point?
Anybody got any ideas or thoughts, or? I know we talked about, we kind of left, I think, is, uh, kind of starting off small and see what it looks like. If, if we, you know, if we're, if we're gonna do it, instead of just going full-blown into something we don't know what it's gonna look like, nor that we can fund it, uh, in the next few years. So, I'm on.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think there's also maybe clarification needs for us and the fire departments and everything as well. The, the positions would be our employees, the county employees. They would not necessarily, or they would not be working on the direction of the chiefs of the different fire departments. Is that correct?
Well, that's another question I had, that's my writer report, but, um, I was just gonna see if you would like me to meet with, like, chiefs of each department as a group and kind of go through these types of scenarios to see, ask what you're, at, what you're gonna be funding. But right now, we don't, we don't know who's gonna answer that. Why? I do have some issues, you know, with like the supervisory aspect, because, I mean, how engaged is the chief gonna be every single day? I mean, is it gonna revert if something catastrophic that happened to the employee, uh, you know, something, did, did, did something wrong, and would it, a lot, open up a lot of this in the county? So, we need a certain amount of supervision, and I just have all the expectations, all the expectations that you send to the fire department. So, there was gonna ask if I could maybe sit down with the chiefs, you know, and just. So we need a certain amount of supervision and I just have all the expectations, all the expectations that you send the fire department. So there was gonna ask if I could maybe sit down with the chiefs, you know, and just to kind of get their thoughts on it, on how they see this thing rolling out, um, you know, for the future. So I don't know if that's, if you want to do that first and then bring that back up and we'll bring it back up in August. Does that, and I'll try to get with them this morning.
I don't think, Mr. Chairman, that'd be necessary.
I do too.
Yeah. I mean, it's necessary to know, uh, the plan of action. Um, I do know just because I am on a fire department that some of the board members and some of the chiefs have gotten some criteria about job description and what, what they're expecting. But Mr. King, I think, being the county manager and in, uh, control of all the hiring and firing in the county should, should definitely find out the criteria and both of them come to an agreement before we say, yeah, yea or nay. And if I'm not mistaken, they originally asked for eight people, which was two per department, rescue and the three fire departments. And we talked about cutting that down to one person, uh, just to get started with and trying to figure all this plan out. And from what I understand by Jackson County's model is those folks are county employees doing maintenance at that facility until the whistle blows, until they have a call. And then their jobs divert to being, um, whatever aspect of that fire department that their chief says that they're, they're certified for. That's my understanding about it.
Yeah, I think we need some more clarification on this before we start appropriating any kind of funds for it. If, if that's good, you guys, have Kevin sit down with the chiefs and kind of get some more. Maybe, maybe you got some questions that you want to give Kevin, he can ask them.
If you have questions or a couple more comments.
I'm back to the same thing we talked about before. How are you gonna fund it? How are we gonna fund it if we do it now and it wasn't budgeted? And you do it now, then we better start getting prepared for the tax increase that's gonna come with it next year.
It will.
I'm not for using the, the North Shore money for salaries now, the North Shore money for things to help them with certain things, equipment and stuff. That's different. But once we start tying that North Shore money up with salaries and then you get a short, uh, I mean, you're gonna start tying it up and then we're gonna depend on it every year. And then if it's not a good year, then you're gonna have to make it up in your budget the other way. But if we're gonna do the tax raising and stuff, we probably need to start getting on with some public hearings before next budget time for sure, which we start the budget in January. So that gives us time to do public hearings on that stuff and any other thing that if we think we're gonna have to raise taxes on, to pay for. Because that's, that was the main thing we talked about, I think, was the raising taxes whenever we talked about this. So, and I know there were other avenues for if we're gonna do a fire tax. Uh, if the communities, they could already start that process now if they chose to, couldn't they, as far as getting a petition and?
Yeah, and I, I, I made y'all copy, I think, that back there, the thing, uh, the, uh, back in the budget process, one of the things was it takes 35% of the district, whatever area you decide is a district. It takes 35% uh, to sign a petition. And so, which is not normal. Normal is about 10% and that, that's usually when you have a petition coming before the board. So it's, it's, it's a lot higher, um, to get it on the ballot. So I don't know. And I think that's, that's been the stumbling block later years during fire taxes because they make it, just to get it on the ballot, ask the question, you gotta have 35%. Which doesn't, you know, doesn't really make a lot of sense. I mean, honestly, why do I get to come in? They're positive they put it on the ballot, you know, for people to actually vote, but they make a stumbling block having, having the burden to put it on the community, you know, to get this thing, uh, actually just on the ballot. I think that's been the stumbling block with, with the, the grassroots effort from the community.
Mr. Chairman, if, if it takes, is that for full time residents here or, or would, would people that, uh, that's just summer residents, would they sign a petition or would that be for them too?
It's A-land, I don't know. They're, they're all landowners. Yeah.
I'm not for using the North Shore money for that town. I mean, we've done that, that money for years. I think we would just let it alone. And for us raising taxes, y'all know that, you know, man.
I suggest we ask our county manager to meet with the fire chiefs and try to get some questions answered. And, you know, one of the things I think that had been discussed or we discussed is even the cross training, how they feel about, you know, how does Wes feel about somebody running out there to get in one of their trucks? How does Alarca feel about somebody from West running to get their truck or from Bryan City? You know, you, you've got, you, you sort of have these groups themselves who are very, um, but we just need to find those answers out, you know?
I agree. Good.
I'll make a little more comeback at the next work session in August and then we'll have a discussion. The second one to that is the school appropriations. Of course, they did not get what they had requested, um, given a million and I think that's got like 1.6 total. And I think they wouldn't let down the, now they're requesting, if we can double out, they would like to request a hack a million, so $500,000 off. Um, this year due to state budget cuts and a lot of different programs. Um, and I just want to mention this. I know that, that I think it's gonna have, probably have more conversation with the school about this. Um, but I did want to say that, that we did meet with them looking at their, their finances a little bit back in, in June. Um, and I think me and Kevin and Roger, our colleagues there, um, we met with, um, the super cabinet, um, the chair and finance. And so we kind of went through some of those questions we had about, um, the impact aid funding, how that was actually being utilized and, and it is being utilized. Um, personally, but we did have some follow up questions for them about that. Uh, but anyway, we came, out of that meeting, we came up with, we're not came up with, we, to this, we'll, what is the state budget cuts? How's it impacting the budget? How's it impacting your services? And that's kind of what I'm gonna come up with this last sum, you know, help. If, if that's what you need is help, we, you know, we kind of want to be responsive. And so I think that's where we come up with, uh, that number. And so they delivered that a few weeks later and that is the number. They would like to request a hack a million dollars from, from either our fund balance or some other resources that we've got, uh, for current expense related, um, things. I did mention and I think I followed up on a mail about Article 46, one of the Article 46, um, stipulations, uh, when it was asked for by the public, that it's gonna be for educational related expenses. Uh, which means current expense and capital. Now, we only are always talking about capital, but current expense is your operational. It's your power bill. It's your all that stuff. So, so theoretically, I didn't, I've not mentioned that part of it, but, um, you can utilize certain portions of Article 46 for that, uh, just currently. But when it was asked for, it's pretty much clearly states on there, the resolution stated current expense and capital. So. Just another, I just want to bring this out. I know y'all will have a lot more questions and I know we'll probably have to have another meeting with them to kind of go through some of this stuff, uh, before we allocate any, any funding, uh, from any source. Um, you probably need to just, I just wanna, I told we, we said we'd bring it up in July, this is July. So that's the reason I'm, I'm pretty known for. But if you have any questions about that one, let me know. Uh, the funding would come from, from savings. I mean, it would be our savings. Uh, we do have a, a fund balance. Uh, new requirement for county government is 20% of your, of your expenses. That is a, a state law of 2020. Uh, we are meeting that department, uh, but I would caution not to take it down close to 20% as you bet it's your, uh, your rate of aid fund. So, um, currently the, uh, North Shore account has about 1.3 million in the account in Raleigh. Um, so just, um, remember how we did allocate some of that, you know, through some of the capital stuff this past spring. Um, and we've not drawn any downs for over a year. So. But I would, uh, I will, I think we need to look at, look at that. And I think, you know, maybe at the next one, we, we talk about that, the utilization, um, drawing it down from Raleigh, sticking it in a special reserve account, you know, or, or whatever. But, um, and I'll give you a friend since, you know, and we talked about this a lot last year was the interest on that money. Uh, we have 52 million bucks in there. Now we have 53.3, 53 million, 300,000. Um, we're gaining about a hundred grand a month, a hundred and twenty maybe, uh, just the accounts that we have locally. And our back here and with North Carolina Government Trust, which is due fidelity in Charlotte, uh, which is the two main, um, criteria for county governments use, the local banking and that. We're gaining just on about 18 million bucks. We're gaining almost 50,000 bucks. But yeah, we're only gaining 120 on 52 million. So I would encourage you to bring down as much money as you can, all the, all the interest at least. And then that way we can gain more interest locally, um, because it is not, um, anyway, that's another discussion, I know, but I'm just saying, uh, from the people of the citizens. So I think we're good on that one.
Yeah. Move on to the county managers report.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to let you know, um, let's see, the event park is completed. Um, looks good. All the stuff has been done. We have a hundred and, a hundred and forty seven spaces. Marked out up there. Um, we're gonna have a great fair next month. Uh, we've got, the road all the way out is complete. Um, all, uh, everything's complete. So it, it looks fabulous. If you want to drive up there, um, and look at it, let me know. We can, we can figure out how to go over and look at it or, or, uh, and I did reach out to both, um, President Plantford and Senator Corbin. Let them know how their money has been, you know, that has allocated, has been used, that was fully, fully completed. Uh, they would like to get together with the board to have maybe a photo op at some point, maybe a presentation. And, um, you know, since they did, they did allocate all the money for that project. Um, the indoor rec diseleny, we are still working on it. We've got, all the equipment is there. Uh, we're just trying to work through, you know, this time of year, eight flat units go down, you know, and so we're just trying to find, manage time to get it done. Um, and so hopefully by, by spring, they did, they did, um, extend the time period that you can utilize the funding until 2028. So we've got a few years. It won't take us that long to get done, I promise. Uh, because we do have the equipment, model and install, I mean, get, get it installed. The library, we are working with McGill Associates, as I've mentioned before. Uh, McGill has come back with a plan to do some sewer. Uh, have worked with the town. We didn't think it was in our best interest to replace every town lawn. So the main one going down Rector Street is a, is a eight inch terracotta lawn, old lawn. And so they're gonna be putting foot in the bill for that. And all we're doing is, is wrapping it around the building with a, a inch main. So I don't think it's gonna be, it'll be 50,000 or less, uh, on our, our piece of it. And that's just to get it around the building. So. Um, with that said, the, um, library did get another grant, $400,000 dollar to come, a dollar worth of help. And it's pretty open, open ended. So, uh, probably in August, I'll have a budget amendment for, for, to get a clarification. On who's actually getting the money, if it's Fontana Regional or Swain County. Uh, if it's Swain County, then I'll have a budget amendment saying, you know, this is another $400,000 or adding the, with the $500,000 we allocated. And maybe hopefully get it more of the project going. So. So a grant, uh, we did get a allocation of grant grant. Cherokee Cable Vision, who, which is now owned by Boston West Fiber Net, got a grant of 1.7 million from the state of Montana. It does require a local match and a local match for us, we had, um, the committee had, had looked at three, three different matches. So actually four. There were four vendors. Um, Cherokee Cable Vision kind of got to the end of it, uh, because they came around the last. So they only have a $5,000 match. So the county had to provide $5,000 of ARPA funding. So it's not, this is not coming from county taxes. It's coming from the ARPA money and the federal money that had came in. So I did sign a, we did send out a letter because we allocated up to $50,000 and this is like two years ago. Um, and so we split it up. I think ZW Media was 15,000. And then there were two other providers I asked for, I think Frontier and, uh, one, maybe, I think it was Boston West also was, uh, was 15. And then Cherokee Cable Vision was five, because that's all we had left in the $50,000. And so anyway, they were awarded in the second go around. And so, uh, we, uh, we're gonna have to pay them, you know, once they complete it. And I think that's for 547, um, 547 different, um, people homes. So that's another 500 homes gonna have high speed internet, um, with the Cherokee Cable, mostly in the eastern part of, of the county. The ARPA funding effective, um, March, March, no, April, April 11th. The ARPA funding, you know, the state emergency was declared over. And so with that, there were different, different guidelines had to sunset basically. And so some of the things we've had to shift around. So I had to, when I fill out the ARPA report at the end of April, I had to put in there a revenue replacement rather than, uh, going with like a specific line, like Prangin Pay or wherever it would have been. You had to specify that. So I just put in, um, we put in revenue replacement, which basically means it's a token. You can use it for whatever. And I think that's, um, you know, sort of going forward, it's still, it's still the same. That's what we've been doing. It's just, I want to let you know about it, just in case you've heard about it. Since the president signed off that the, uh, the state emergency was over, uh, then a lot of county had to switch back to, uh, what they call, uh, revenue replacement. Which basically means if a county got less than 10 million, you can say, okay, it's a standard deduction, basically. As long as you use it for any county services whatsoever, uh, it's over 10, it's under 10 million. Um, it's, it's more open, I guess is what you'd say. Where before, when it first was going on, when, when ARPA's first come on and COVID was going on, they were more specific and we had to come up with like, um, a set of guidelines, you know, the county level. So we're, we're working through some of those paperwork issues. Uh, it is a massive paperwork, uh, for all this stuff. So, but we are switching to that, um, just because it happened. Um, just didn't want to let you know that. The, uh, uh, working with, um, you know, looking at the Ely Sewer District. Uh, we, we are in, we'll call it the second or third round. So Governor Cooper announced, uh, probably about two weeks ago, that Swain County was gonna be sent, their application, or our application was sent up to Washington for the final round of the ARC funding for the Ely Sewer District, which we're in line for 750,000 to finish that project though. So once we have that, we'll have 750,000 plus the 1.5 million that we've got in the bank account on behalf of that project. Um, so hopefully if it makes it through that final phase, which, um, we're hopeful, we've never gotten to this point yet. Um, so hopefully, if it makes it through that final phase, which, um, we're hopeful, we've never gotten to this point yet, so we're hopeful. But, uh, once that happens, um, then we can finish that project up. And I've mentioned earlier, you know, looking at River Crossing and, and kinda coming back down toward Brossom. Have had a lot of conversations with Town of Brossom City, they're very enthusiastic about it. I've got a meeting next Wednesday with the town, uh, the tribe, and, uh, and us. The tribe is looking at doing a, um, I'm trying to think of the name of it, it's a building that they house cultural relics.
Artifacts?
Artifacts, yes, art, artifact. And so they are looking at, um, putting that, uh, next to Kedua, up on the Gallow Creek Route. So there's already a sewer man out there, so we're meeting with them out there on the nineteenth, to kinda look at what they're doing, and also to see how we can get sewer back from the Ely, I mean, but I did want to let you know I will be meeting with them. And I'm, I'm providing the talent there as well, um, so I think we're, I think we're all gonna work together and hopefully we may be able to get water up there. Uh, if, if, if there's really any more, uh, water suppression, um, maybe there's an opportunity, uh, to get water in there as well, so. The slide, though, so the white slide has been positioned, if you notice, it's got those flags up there, we'll be starting to do, uh, all of the footing and that sort of thing. So hopefully this, this winter, we'll get that in place for next spring. Um, and I figure we'll have more conversation about that on that, that August as well. The land swap for Black Hillhead was completed, um, the latter part of June, so that's all, it's all completed. And I think that's it.
All right, thank you, uh, Commissioner Reports, Ross, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, I don't.
The only, the only meeting I could recall having was just the recent meeting we had with the, uh, Rec Park on the, about the board and the guidance, um, for the Rec Committee. So that's all I could think of, Mr. Chairman, that I had before.
Phil?
Uh, myself and our chairman went to a VA Health meet, board meeting, and of course, uh, it was a, a learning meeting for me because it's the first time I've been involved with VA. And, uh, I was trying to think, what, the only other thing, you know, they're working on some of the problems that, that's in the area. Beds, places for people to go who need mental health services. And, uh, so we're still keeping them abreast of, you know, uh, kids in our own area and adults too that need services. So that's important to our community about that. Um, I will say too that I, um, I'm gonna have to withdraw from the nursing home board. And the reason being is my mother-in-law is in a nursing home here in Swain County. And so therefore, according to state criteria, I cannot be, I cannot serve on that board. So it would be open for anybody else if you're interested in, uh, being on the nursing home board, to, uh, to do that, or we're looking for volunteers too. But anyway, that's just, uh, state criteria and, uh, uh, just needed to pass that on. I cannot serve on that one, but, uh, and those two boards, basically.
Like Phil said, we went to the VA Health meeting over in Franklin, uh, it was a very good meeting, a lot of information about, uh, mental health and, uh, really addressing, this meeting was really addressing, a lot of it was talked about by a doctor, who's addressing the needs for, uh, children, uh, mental health, not being able to find beds and. Some of these kids been stuck in an ER for forty, forty days, did not say that one time? Forty, forty days, that's crazy. And, uh, no, so they're, they're trying to get a game plan. And I, I asked the question there, this is not just in North Carolina, it's, it's, uh, it's in the United States, it's, it's, it's not just even region-wide. That they're having a crisis on, uh, for number one is shortage of beds, but number two is the shortage of workers to work those beds. So they don't have enough nurses and, and doctors to be able to see these patients, and so it's, it's a, it's a crisis throughout the United States that needs to be figured out and handled. And I think the, their budget was amazingly big this year, uh, I think it's a little bit over one point something billion dollars, uh, budget to get, trying to figure stuff out, so. And it's not just happening with youth, but it's happening throughout the adults as well, because I know many people that's went to the hospital, never made it into a room for several weeks. And so we do have a, that's a big crisis, I think we've got in our nation, uh, so, but that meeting went really well, and, uh, so that's what I've got, yeah.
I don't have any.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, next is informal discussion, any informal discussion?
I have a few things, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The first thing on my list is about the Recreation Department Advisory Committee. And I checked back on their resolution, I wanna make sure, and there's been several issues, lots of the committee members are getting complaints, and they're trying to handle complaints, and they're relaying information to us, and I think it, uh, I think it's part of their job. Think that's what we're, put them on there to do, but I was a little frustrated that the meeting, because it, it's like we tried to call a meeting with the Rec Department back in May, when we started this, now it's pushed off all the way to August. And that was some of my frustration with the whole situation, because I feel like, and, and some of the members said that they hadn't seen the resolution, and they definitely need to see the resolution, because it gives them their purpose. And it would answer lots of questions that people has. Um, we made this committee, and I, I feel like we sort of dropped the ball in this committee. We started it back in, at the end of two thousand eighteen, and I think we were moving in a good direction of trying to get things accomplished from getting lights fixed, getting, uh, trying to get, bring some programs back in. Um, and I think that that's why we started them, was we were having issues constantly, complaints constantly about our Rec Department, this is happening, this is happening, can't use lights, can't do this, can't do that. So that's why we made the committee, and we gave them a real purpose, the purpose, and it says in our resolution. The purpose of this committee is to study and advise the Board of Commissioners on programming and facility needs of the Recreation Department. So, I mean, that's what we charged them with, studying the programs and studying the needs for the facility, and to come to us if we, we were trying to straighten out the programs we already have. And that's one reason why I kept wanting this meeting, so that we could talk to their purpose, about their purpose. All of us getting on the same page, and then we had our directors resign or retire, we get a new director, and I still see the need of the meeting as sooner than later, but it's gonna be in August. Um, because we need to make sure all the board members or committee members have their purpose, and we need to help them direct in the direction, we need to tell them what we want them to do. I think we failed them, we made this committee, and I know I'm sick of everybody blaming COVID, but even with COVID, I think it really affected the purpose of this committee. I think we's headed in a good direction, because there's rules in here too, even about seventy-five percent of meetings, a member of the committee who fails to attend is automatically off, they have three-year terms. I don't know, I know two or three people on the board that's, or committee that's been there for, since it began. I don't know if we, did we just put them back on, did they reapply?
They reapply.
They did reapply, but, because their term limit's coming up again.
I think two conservative terms is what they've been, they've been doing.
Uh, that's not on here.
Oh, it's not, okay.
No, it says, "All members should have terms for a period of three years. Terms shall end on June thirtieth and the year the term expires." "The Rec Advisory Committee shall elect a chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary on the first meeting of the new fiscal year." "All members of the committee shall serve without compensation. The committee shall adopt its own rules of procedure to govern its meetings, and committee will meet at least once every three months." See, right there is one question I had, because they decided to meet every month, and they can, if they choose to, that's in here. So, and I was told, well, maybe they've overstepped looking at budget stuff, well, no, to study, to study the programs and stuff, they're allowed to look at the budget stuff, I'm pretty sure. From my understanding, they can. So, I mean, that, I'd like to get us to talking about them, talking to them, uh, and for anybody who wants to be on this committee, this should've been the first thing that they saw. And we failed them, I failed them, uh, they're supposed to have a biannual report with us, written biannual report. We haven't done that, and. So that's besides any advice that they wanna give us between then and, but. I think that we need to get on top of all of our committees, this one, any others. And I, I would like to get all the information, any committees we've made, and what the rules, the resolutions, or whatever, so we can all be sure we know what they are, and that could nip a whole lot of stuff.
I agree.
I can help with lots of issues. The next thing I got, if anybody wants to talk about that.
I think you're heading in the right direction, I think we need to kinda start over, kinda, yeah.
And, and we definitely need to make sure if anybody's missing meetings and stuff, that we take care of it.
Yeah.
The next thing on my list is the TDA. And I wasn't taking it lightly when I made the motion to get rid of the TDA. I just, my computer wouldn't let me pull this stuff up at my house whenever Mr. King sent it to me. But I come here earlier today and I got the information that we needed. Current employees and operational costs. And then over here's the employee's salary, uh, some of them's full-time, some of them's part-time. And I don't know, Mr. King, if you can clarify on this sheet, because I thought maybe the ones that were full-time made is five on this sheet, that have got their salaries. I know we talked about which ones is part-time on this other sheet.
This sheet, is this the one you're talking about?
Yes, Darren Bur, full-time.
He might be full-time, I'll have to check him out, because he, uh, might go up if retired. So, if he took over as market manager, I don't, no, I didn't think he was full-time, but he might be.
So with these two papers, I've got the salaries here, and I've got the operation costs here. So I'm gonna be looking over this, and I wanted to talk to you, and it's about what we might do, if we was to ever do, decide to get rid of the TDA, and because I was not taking it lightly, I meant everything I said, that we do not need it for marketing. We have, it's free marketing for tourism industry, if we can't use it for anything besides marketing and capital projects for tourism to bring more tourists here, I still feel we do not need it. I do know that if we do step away from it, get rid of it, then the town will immediately start applying through the legislature to get their, establish theirs, which is fine, it's a lot less money for now, um, that they would be getting compared to what we take in. But I even had an idea on that, because if, if they do that, then we can talk to them about taking over some of this. And they could keep employees, and they could spend money to manage the aquarium, fly fishing museum, farmer's market, heritage museum. If they would be interested, I don't know how interested they'd be. But that's what we're marketing more so anyway, is the town. Most of the time we spend, they, the TDA spends lots of money in town already. But as far as marketing, we need no more marketing, we have plenty, there's plenty avenues for marketing, the businesses can market. I mean, the, the park market, we're, we're marketing for tubing in the park. We all have to pay parking fee now to even go up there, but we're turning around marketing for the park, which is not necessary whatsoever. But we're doing it, and I just, I, I was dead serious when I wanted, I, I want us to have more conversations on this. So I thought I would bring that up. And here's some information, if you guys wanna look at it, and I will bring it back up, and we'll talk about it some more.
Anything else, Chuck, go ahead?
It looks like some of these people makes pretty good living off of TDA company. What would the forty-six thousand dollars a year, what would she do for, Miss Mary Ann? Is she the director or something?
She's the director.
Then we've got one thirty-nine thousand, reckon what she would do, Rita Jones. You have any idea?
Big question for the TDA, I guess.
Yeah, we gonna get them in here, they, we gonna meet them with the TDA, any kind of sale?
Uh, we've not set one up.
We need to go back over the boards and committees and see too, when, how many times they're supposed to come. Refresh on all of our boards and committees that we've made. I just felt like we'd sort of got complacent, I guess, with COVID and.
Basically, right here would be the, the employees, that it would take to run what we've got, deal with them, like the aquarium, the fly fishing museum, and the farmer's market is basically what we're involved with, ain't it?
I think so.
Ain't that basically, so that, looking at three employees there, and if we could pick up their payroll. I make my living off tourists, but I, I'm, I'm, I agree with Kenneth, you know, marketing, we don't, we don't need no more marketing. We're, we're at capacity at what we can do. I mean, my business, I do all I can do right now, I couldn't, if there was ten thousand more people here, I, I make the max what I can do. But that's up to you all. I don't, I don't think that we'll ever be able to get rid of it because people looks at it. A different direction than what I look. They look at dollar signs is what they see. I don't see it that way.
Anything else?
I have got more discussion. I've had a lot of people, well, not a lot of people, but a couple of people. The lady that, that manages the IGA. She coordinated me in there of what we was gonna do with the homeless people. Coming in and stealing from her behind her, behind her deck down there. Uh, needles everywhere. And I guess it's an isolated place where they hide. Under the, the bridge over here at the oil wash. You know, the church gives them food down. Well, they, they take that food down there. And what they can eat, I reckon, open and eat. You know, they, they'll eat you. But once you have to cook or something, they just throw that. So, the bridges, under the bridges is amazing. But I just thought I'd bragging at this, you know, they spend more than her, I mean, that. That, uh, we need to do something, but Lord, what do you do? I reckon they're bringing them from a ash pool, flames pool. And they just set them out. Is that the truth? Is, is, anybody?
I don't know that, but I know that we see a different group of people here about every other week.
I don't know.
I don't know where they're coming.
Everybody, but I, I, I don't know them. And then there's something else that a couple of people on Deep Creek has, has got a hold of me about. Is that, uh, you have people shuttling tubers to Deep Creek. Charging them a fee to shuttle them. And he was mad because he tried to shuttle people with horses in a park with no life. Which now, you, you got them shuttling tubers and making the same money. And, 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 well, it's not right if, you know, one man can't make it, another man will not be able to. And that's just a couple thoughts on that. But, uh, I know now that we can't deal with the park in general, but they're not gonna deal with us.
No, probably not. Probably not.
But, uh, I think it's time we look into something about the homeless. You know, e- any ones ever out early in the morning, really? It's, they're so sworn. I don't know where they all come from.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, now we do have a. Housing committee. That we started who's supposed to define for us all the. Different. Housing issues. But even with it, they had ideas of certain things, but the other things. I don't know about the homeless stuff. There was somebody. Threw up an idea about a homeless shelter somewhere and. It was too close to a development and. People in development messaged, I don't know if they messaged everybody. They messaged me. So, they didn't, didn't want that around their place. It'd be. Devalue their property and have vagrants and stuff all around them and. I told. Somebody else, I said, well, they didn't. Asked me how I felt when they built a big house up there and made my valuations go way up. If somebody wanted to do that, I'd rather start locally and. Somebody have an idea on it. But we offered several things that might contribute to some of the issues. Nobody wants to. Hear it and I'm not. When, when, the more programs you have to feed people and stuff. That will contribute to more people coming also. I know some of the other big cities are trying to back off of some of that stuff. Uh, we have a, a. Sort of, it, it ain't even a real, it's not a big accommodating shelter, the restoration house is a shelter though, but. Think that they were advertising. Come, come to the shelter. That there's more homeless than what they can accommodate, but. The more stuff you do, and I'm, I mean, the people, I understand they want to help people. But it, it also draws in more, more people. I know in other cities and stuff, they are shying away from some of that. Uh, feeding and stuff because it. These other places, I don't, I don't know where they're coming from. I don't know if other towns is bringing them. I heard that. I heard that they's coming from other places. I also had one lady told me that there's lots of them are local. I don't know how, what the percentage of local ones are. I'd say most of your local people. Have a place they might be able to go to, so they're not probably necessarily plum homeless.
Yeah, I, I think it's something we need to talk about. I mean, we need to talk about the town. The town, you know, has a lot of. Control over that as well. We probably need to talk with the town about some of that, cause most of that's in town.
When we, we do try and monitor any, any county, uh, any county-owned facility. We have like, like a little ordering and, and if there is, you know, stuff happening, we, we do. You know, call the police, but every, at the end of the day, it is a public property. We just can't. Come hang out because they deter people from utilizing them. You know, it's kinda like, um. You know, some of the families go have picnic at the riverfront park and got people sleeping on, you know, at the end of the gazebo. You can't have that. So, we, we do ask them to move on and, and, uh, we've had a few. People have run into the, the law enforcement after the problem, but we try to monitor that because it's. It's for the benefit of all people, not just, and for specific purpose, not, not for sleep.
Yeah.
And they've been allowed, can't do so much.
No, they, they can't do anything. They, they asked them to move on. I mean, we've had several applications out throughout the last. It's, it's really compounded probably in the last eight, eight or nine years, but. Here, you know, recently it does. Yeah, I think documented forty. Forty homeless by now. But, uh, that's, that fluctuates, like they say, you know, so many will bring in more people. And it, it is service delivered. I mean, it's, if you offer it, they, they, they unfortunately will, will find out and.
They'll come back.
Utilize the services.
Yeah.
We gotta have compassion for, I mean, I think it's the old cohort and so on. You know, don't look good on the streets.
But they don't know how to help them. And, and then if you get to doing more stuff, the government involvement, then that's just a whole lot of more money and. Whole lot of. I mean, even. We don't have the facilities to handle. Nothing.
It's hard, it's hard to deal, it's hard to deal with because, I mean, I've worked a few of them, just. But they don't have no license. They don't have, you know, it's, that work ethic is not great sometimes, so. It's, it's hard to get them going and it's, uh, you know, I, I, I've said this before and I said it many times to different people, but you, you. You can't, you can't fix people. All you can do is give them the tools. And they have to eventually fix herself. And, uh, sometimes it's, uh, it ain't really lack of compassion, just lack of the ability to do it. So, yeah, we definitely have a problem. We'll keep talking about that. Maybe if anybody has any ideas, we'll bring them back up.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a quick couple of things. Hopefully I can be quick. This one reminded, reminded me of that and I looked it up. Our unemployment rate in Swan County is two point eight percent. The state's three point four and the nation's three point six. We got one of the lowest, we're, we're lower than the state or the, or the nation, so. If, you know, if anybody wants to work, they're, they can. You know, our unemployment rate is very low and this. Um, I, I received a call from a, a member of the broadband committee. Um, you know, we had, with, no one stepped up to fill that position. That Danny, I think, had when he left. They asked me to fill it. I told them I would. If it's, if it's the wishes of the board, I'd volunteer to serve on that broadband committee. I had, uh, the same individual, I think, that spoke with you, David, spoke with me as well. And I think we do need clarification of what. Commercial traffic is. And it seems. I don't like the idea of playing favorites and it seems like there's people who can get away with commercial trafficking. People who can't. So, we need, it seems like we need to get, and I'm not sure how we do that, Mr. King, cause I don't think we're on really good au, a good, uh, relationship with a lot of. Headquarters on the Tennessee side, uh, but maybe we can get a clarification of just what that commercial traffic is. And that same individual, uh, Mr. Loftus office brought up and I went by there and I did see that. Of course, now this is July fourth week, so it's, it's exceptionally busy up there. But there wasn't even, it wasn't good parking in the horse trailer parking area. People, people were using that just to park their cars. So, if I'd gone up there with the gooseneck, I'd have had, or a couple of goosenecks were up there or something. I'd had trouble. I mean, I probably would've had to back in from the pavement and back all the way in there instead of getting up in there and then swinging the gooseneck around. So, even that, I'd like to have some clarification. I mean, is that, is that the horse parking, how that works? I spoke to somebody about that though. I mean. Trouble with that is, they may just say, well, that's fine. We just won't allow horse parking at all. So, you know, if, if. Cause that's kinda what they'd wanna go for anyway. So, anyway, that's a couple of those things that I wanted just to. Bring up. Uh, I did have one other thing. Um. I've had some, uh, a couple of emails, something about solar grant application monies, that there's monies for solar. You, can you enlighten us on that or is that, what is that about? Is there money out there for that? Is that just, what is that, Mr. King?
There, there has been monies available. I mean, if you're looking at commercial versus. Are you looking at commercial or residential?
This is residential, I believe.
There has been programs residentially. Uh, the problem, I think, and you've got a few people in the room, they can speak more about it than me. There's nobody to maintain these units. So, th- these companies kinda come in, they sold us a bill of goods and. And people got the credit, you know, like off of taxes or whatever. Uh, to kinda lessen the burden on their, their power bill. But then the system's not working and the companies go out of business and they're left with more. And so, that's kinda what's happening. Uh, there's been several instances of that in, in the county. And so, I don't know, I mean, going forward, there's all kinds of federal programs that, that lessen your tax burden. They give you tax credits that give you. You know, Duke Energy, I think, will sponsor some of that. So, they give you, Duke, even Duke Energy will help, try to provide that to, to lessen the burden on the power grid. I don't know of any specific grants per se that, that's, that's all one hundred percent free. It's, it's more of a cost sharing and a cost-free coupon. More, it's not, you know, it's just like a, you take out a loan, you get some stuff. And if it doesn't produce this amount of money, kinda like the school bill with their, their power. Uh, then we're gonna pay, we're gonna make that payment for you if it's not, you know what I'm saying? But it's kind of a weird.
The, the individual contacted us, uh, uh, talking to me about it. Could I have him speak to you about it? I don't wanna have him call and speak to you about that.
You can. I mean, it's, it's more if they look at their tax return, if there's a, a citation there that, that talks about that and. I, I, I don't mind talking to you, but you just don't call me. I don't know a damn.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, back to some of the park stuff. No. Anything? No, the lawyer still says no case. We ain't got nothing to send.
We, we got no, I've got no information to send them, so. Other than what we've already got, it's not helping. I mean, it didn't help. I don't know, there's no. No information.
I still think you need a copy of that resolution, send every month until they come like over and have kind, some kinda response.
Is, is there any laws about condemned land that has to do with charging fees?
I don't know, Lord, but I would turn back an accent.
Because since it was condemned, and I say it again. They told the people that they condemned their land, that they would never have to pay any fee to go back in there. Which was obviously not true.
It should include admission and parking. Shouldn't be any fee. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be, shouldn't be a backcountry camping fee.
But then it's, I don't.
We against all that. Still, still, and we fought it up there to no avail, you know?
We, we just can't, it, it's. I don't know what to do about any of it. I don't, I don't wanna give up. At all, but it's just like. There ain't a whole lot. I mean, they forced it through. It's a done deal. Everybody's talking about how much money it generates, but they don't care about the, the people. They condemned. Land and took it and. I mean, they, they compensated them a little bit. Some people never took the compensation. Um. I mean, it's still not right. And then they were told me and Mr. Loftus that they were gonna shut that. New road down from May fifteenth to August fifteenth repaid and. I don't reckon it shut down. I don't think they're gonna shut it down. I've been told now they ain't, but.
I think they're just gonna work around those crews. When they get started working. I mean, they've, they've done some preliminaries to. They have some equipment over there, but not, um, not all of it.
But I know now why she said it might affect my declaration in October. Because more than likely it's going to.
It's gonna be stretched out.
Even though it's supposed to been started in May. So, I, I mean, it's just, there's all kinds of issues and it's. I, I don't. I don't know that there's anything we can do, but.
We can quit driving. If you want us to send a resolution, I'm like, that's fine. Just we're looking at it as a draw on the federal or the state, then.
Well, we need to, I've thought about that resolution. I, I know at one time we thought about new ideas to put on it, but we need to put it on there, but it's being condemned. The last forty-four thousand acres being condemned. Yeah, they was compensated, but they were told, you can take this money and leave, or you can just leave, but you're leaving. And they didn't condemn everybody. The copper mine wasn't condemned until, it wasn't condemned.
Not till it sold.
They sold it in, or they sold to them in nineteen eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
They didn't give their people the same opportunities even then. So, I mean, I'm just.
What would be wrong with sending them a tax fee? I mean, we know they're gonna pay it, but what would be wrong with it?
I'd, I'd like to send them one, but they, they're gonna say, well, this is why we helping with this, this, and this, but.
It ain't enough help compared to what we pay as taxpayers.
It's not compared to how much land, all the restrictions that came with it.
You know, hindsight's always twenty-twenty. And when we took that money. It was our only chip we had away. We really did. And I don't blame nobody for it.
That was just for building the, not building the road or building the road.
But that was the, the chip that we had. That was the one ace.
I asked Kevin one time about, when we first come in here about doing the PILT money. Has it ever been reevaluated or has anybody ever looked at it and said? Times has changed or, you know, uh, 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 up and at any, but. Uh, I think Kevin elaborated that some of the, uh, western. Parks had wanted to do it, but it would hurt us.
It would hurt us worse.
You've got. PILT program is, is across the country. So, you've got counties out west that's got like four and a half, five, six million acre. Whereas there are two hundred and thirty-eight thousand acres. And so, they're pressing for per acre. Where the federal government's saying, well, you've got a, one that maybe don't have like five thousand people or less out there, but you got one that got fourteen thousand people here. And so, what they did was, they said, okay, if you make, if you have five thousand people or less, you get a lot less money per acre. Than if you have a county that, that's got five thousand or more. That's why we get actually more than some of the big counties out west. But see, it's always been, that's why I've been all along with me, me. All those western centers, I mean, they want it per acre, period. If that happens, we might, we might get fifty thousand bucks. You know, if you think about the amount of acres and if you did it per acre, it's only, that's why I said they always caution people because. All it is is a specific amount of money. They allocate seven hundred million dollars to the PILT program nationally every year. That's all they, that's all they get. And then Bureau of Land Management, they're the ones that put that value on there. Um, based on how much it should be. And it, it, it's done like all those national areas. Now, now granted, and I keep bringing this up, all those western states. It's different types of property. You've got mining out there, you've got leasehold, people leasehold for ranches and everything else out there. And those, they, they don't take that considered. And those, they, they don't take that consideration, it's just pilt. And so those, those communities just get pilt. And so, but that's why I say caution with the pilt thing, because if they take any sway or any contradiction to that, they're, they're ready to pass on. I mean, I, it's evident, they, they're, they're very organized. They've got a western region interstate committee. It's all the western states, they have a committee that's within that pilt, within NACO they've got one. And there, that's one, that's their number one priority is to change their form. Their number one priority. But I, I'm for you, I, I think that we were, we are unique in essence.
They're not paying none of us.
In essence, we were a, um, predominantly mill buildings. Like if you had a, you know, like you said, or mill buildings, when you have all these different places in the park that, that, that were an economic center of commerce, and they, yeah, they moved them off. Now, the mills don't, the big ports don't, but there were a lot of places down there that they did. And it's just not, even, even like at Almond or any of the other places that we flooded, it's the same difference, the same difference. So I, we, what we can change through this, we can change that too, however y'all want to handle it. I want to go back to one of the things you were talking about, David, about the tuber. If you want me to reach out to the park, I can, I will. Um, I don't want to, I think you brought this, talking about the horse trailer stuff. I don't want to make it worse. So if y'all want me to, I will. If you don't want, I'll leave it alone. But if you just tell me what y'all want to do. I mean, I don't mind me reaching out and saying, why is there, why is there double standards here? Um, but I don't want to make it worse.
Well, it's just not just tubers. Um, there's, there's companies out there that take people up to the Appalachian Trail, drop them off, uh, on the park side as well. Uh, there's a, that's been going on for years.
Guide services, aren't they? That go and guide in the park too?
Maybe. What do you think, Roger, just having, what, commercial, what they're...
Yeah, I think, like, like I said, it just, to have them present us what is their guide? What, what is the definition of commercial? Without giving away why we're so interested in it, just like, what is your definition of commercial traffic in, in, in the park? Because I understand it, the, we don't re, want to reach a tipping point where they say, okay, well, you're right. We're not gonna do any of this or that, or, you know, end up making it harder than it already is.
I, I've always just thought it was more like, you know, if you're going up to four forty-one, they have a lot of tractor trailers coming out.
Right, right.
You know, back and forth, but...
I'd say that was the intent of it.
Well, they won't even let me like, like pack people in, you know, not take them camping or just carry their stuff. Because it's, you know, they, they say it's commercial, you know? Can't do it.
I'd say reach out, ask that question. At least we'll have a definition from them of what it was.
Back on the pilt stuff, oh, another thing you put on the resolution, I mean, I want to make sure all of the other park, was all that land out west condemned? Or was it...
Most of it was rammed because it was so, you know, it was...
So vast.
See, here the logging companies, they all had their say. Lots of them went to court and they worked out the deal, but the, um, the, the last forty-four thousand acres in Swain County was condemned. They used the TVA to condemn it. And, and they keep saying, we're the same as Shenandoah, we're the same. And I tell them, no, we're not. I had these discussions with park management and I said, no, we're not the same. Our land was condemned by the TVA because they used, when they had the TVA condemning for the lake, they went ahead and condemned, made the land grab, which should have been illegal to begin with. Um, and we're different than all of the parks out west. Like you said, they have, they can use the resources, we cannot. But what about to displace the amount of displaced people from here? Out there, they had probably one hand on thousands and thousands of acres. But that, you had displacement, there's a whole lot of avenues that we could argue the point with any of the people out west and the parks. We're, I would definitely put the condemned aspect in the resolution and check and see if there is anything, I mean, which they, they didn't care when they condemned all the land and then they found a loophole to trade and make lake estates. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's just, it's zero representation in what, a little bit of representation we're trying to give. I just feel like we're getting slapped around like a, like somebody who ain't got no fight in them. We're just slapped around and taking it. And I'm tired of it, that I don't know what to do about it.
So we'll have, have Kevin redo that resolution and we can look at it. And then we'll send it, just, we'll keep sending it, we'll flood the emails with it.
So I've got, um, put it in there, we got forty-four thousand acres being condemned by TBA and they transferred to Park Services in nineteen forty-six. Uh, we've got displaced people where we're not like other western states. And we're also the fourth largest county east of Mississippi to get paid a little bit. Y'all think anything else? Shoot me in.
All right, moving on, any public comment? No public comment. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion, Mr. Chair.
Any second. I'll favor Police Rager.